We'll call a meeting to order and I don't think she has the opportunity. Yeah, she doesn't have the choices. Traffic's pretty tied up. But we've got a lot to cover today, especially in the work session, so um we should probably get started. So welcome everybody. Just you all. And our first order business is our results policy prioritization. This is our annual thing and Margot is there to help us.
And I think and we also wanted to add an agenda item, so.
Yeah, um, we want to have a brief discussion about the attorney's opinion that Todd got. So we will probably do that. What are you thinking after?
After we go through the these.
These, yeah, at the end, so but we want to make sure we get to that, so.
Yeah, I think we, to me it looks like what we want to accomplish is our annual results. But I don't think this should take us a huge amount of time because I'm not thinking of a lot. But you never know, so. Kind of thought about thirty minutes for that. And then we want to talk about East End Library and. Kind of like how you move forward with that. Are you going to make a decision and check in on direction, see where people are thinking about? Then what you need to know, what you need to do to put is all that.
People are coming in.
Okay, good, okay. Um, so that will have that discussion maybe. Around thirty forty-five minutes for that discussion and then um talk about Royal Lane. In terms of what you want to do with that property. Um, and then and with talking about. The the lawyer's letter about essential voting, which really should talk about kind of what were your thoughts on that and um. So I would think we'll be done by eleven thirty. And are we ready to start? Okay, so um we did this last year, we do this every year, which is. I don't know when we started, but it was actually fairly brilliant idea to do it. Um, since we didn't always do this, but it, I don't know when we started doing it, but it became very useful to. To direct the staff in terms of budget setting, um in terms of priorities and we always said. Um, that if it's on results, it is important. Right, so it's already important. And I thought last year you went through kind of a wild. Uh, context for the discussion trends and impacts and I didn't think, it seemed like we could kind of look at those and say. Okay, has anything changed about them? I didn't think we needed to start with a blank piece of paper because we've had. A lot of things here in terms of whatever, but I did want you to look at these and see. You know, is this kind of what you. See in terms of a context for result settings, anything changed or. You want to add anything or refine anything and then what does that mean for as a as a district, so. Any thoughts?
I think the polarization in the community. It's gotten more, way more. It's not just. I was thinking of it just in the urban centers.
Yeah.
Starting to rural versus many, east versus west, then.
You're talking polar essentially about the library or about. Just in general, general, so general political and all that.
Philosophical, political.
Okay, disagree most.
Okay.
Everything. As well, there's no discussions anymore.
Well, in reading this list and preparing for the meeting, I was kind of struck by. How much things are the same. I mean, I see. I see this list as being a pretty good description of what. What the current trends or impacts are. Still a lot of people moving in. Still. I mean, in the the. Importance of physical connections and and face-to-face meetings were missed and I think we're seeing that in the programming numbers where. And and the attendance numbers at the libraries, people are really coming back in groups because people have missed it.
And in gen-.
And in general, I mean, not just the library, but concerts, yeah, I mean, people are just anytime there's an opportunity to get together, people are there.
I went to an event in Chicago recently with five hundred people, first time they this group had been together of like a. Symphony group. And just people were just hungry to see each other. So you're saying that if always. Others?
Um, I also think that newcomers that have a lack of history of Deschutes County and. I think they also have a lack of uh information and knowledge about what the library has to offer.
Okay.
It seems like we do a lot to try and. Help these people. Learn that we don't seem to always do the.
Would you already seen um I'm just curious from staff perspective about the stability. Issues that continuing to be talked about that last year. Lack of stability in terms of stress on staff.
It's it's gotten better because the mask mandate. Was really hard on staff because they got yelled at constantly. So that part's gotten better, but I would still say compared to six years ago. It's it's not, no, it goes away.
I think that's in general, though.
Yes.
And to do at the greatest gas station, you have to be gas people. That's just.
Yeah. Before I forget, though, I wanted to say that I came to the library yesterday for a meeting at ten o'clock in the library. It was closed until ten for voters to vote, I think. That's what they said.
Close to.
And I thought. No, this was.
Oh, we had a staff meeting.
So anything else in terms of the contacts?
Oh, that's the newcomers. I look at the odd men who are new. They're much higher educated. If they're going forward to move in here. This is not their, other than their kids going to school. This is not their town. Their, all their knowledge of of the community is from where they came from. And they have different expectations of the public services.
Right.
They love the small town atmosphere of. Central Oregon. But they don't want to keep it that way. They want the services, they're in the bank, have it now.
Can you give an example of what kinds of services? There that they're not, they they think they're not getting.
Oh, yeah, like public services, the the response of the motor department. Like snow today, they expect it to be gone by the time they get up.
Are you saying that there's an entitlement?
City by the time you get up, the streets are cloud because they've been out there all day. Now, we have. The street department, at least in the county, has certain rules. If it's not this thick, they don't plow.
Right.
Because you can get through it.
Right. So.
They expect it to have been done all the way to their driveway.
Right.
And then when you talk about police service, it's the fire department. You know, beyond the fire boards. They expected.
Right, so it kind of looks like, yeah, you know. Yes and yes and. Really seeing people coming back and especially reflecting in your community. Continuing expectation. So maybe we're just going over last year's kind of trends and impacts. How they help us look at our prioritization. I don't want to.
I'm just wondering. I'm gonna go through this, but it used to be that there was a growing trend to close the doors.
Meaning?
No more growth, give everybody out. Reach our capacity, any number of reasons. Basically, it's a NIMBY type thing. In my mind. Maybe not, but I'm not sure. I'm not hearing a lot of that lately. Have you?
I think it exists. It's always existed. People don't want the growth, but it just.
Yeah, but isn't it being verbalized? I've not seen it as much as it used to.
I think it's, I think it's more of a, I mean, I think people. People are more complaining about.
Thank you. Are you good now?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, sorry, Hannah, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, like we're losing the things that.
Like our town.
Right.
Can we just recap the last five minutes of discussion? I have no idea what we're talking about.
Well, we're just talking about, yeah, we're a little chaotic here, so let's kind of come back here. Um, what I, we're just talking about. People sense community who are moving here. I think it's like you were. Talking about and expectations of their sense of belonging. To something, so so maybe you got what I mean to add.
Well, I was. If anybody needs more concrete or anything. Take a minute. Okay, um, I have a question.
Okay.
So on the community issues where we said there is a lack of capacity in the county to deal with homelessness and mental illness. Were we just discussing that there weren't enough people, enough agencies to take care of it? Is that what we meant by that?
I think it seemed to be like they didn't have any real solutions.
Right.
Or or are struggling to meet.
And that continues.
And the other thing that that I thought about on the um decrease in affordable living. I know in the last year, I think countered quite a few young people who have. Want have been able to procure jobs and have wanted to move here. And they can't move here, they can't afford it, they can't afford, I mean, I've encountered, my my husband has a couple of rentals in Redmond. And um they don't get filled, but people contact us on a regular basis asking. You know, they they desperately want to move here and it bothers me that. I guess the only wealthy older people are able to move here, that we're losing that youth. Um, and being able to move into this area.
But but there is starting to be a lot more chatter and conversation about that, which is good, that and all this. Whether they'll be able to solve it or not, but it is a topic.
Yeah, and then I wanted to ask the question, um. Um, has has the staff still been experiencing lack of stability that we talked about?
Yeah, we just talked about that. So somebody can summarize, yeah.
I just, the answer is not as bad as it was with the mask mandate, but.
That that losing the mask mandate helped make that better, so not over. And not seeing an increase in the number of people challenging, you know, coming up to them, questioning, why is this book on the shelf or things like that?
No, it's um. I have to say, you know, usually. We have really good. Connections with our customers, so a lot of it, when we're having challenges, come down more to. People that are having having difficulty on their own. Um, you know, whether it's mental illness challenge or something like that, that is something that we are dealing with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was a thing interesting in you on the. On affordability. We're noticing that, like in my neighborhood. That a lot of young families. Are moving in.
Are you experienced? We aren't in Redmond. It's been, it's the number of young families that are moving in has slowed way down.
Oh, ours is. I was surprised because you used to be average Asian, you know, our development would be fifty plus.
And that would be good information actually to get and then you, the school districts know that. That probably would be good demographics in terms of your planning for, you know.
Yes, we can, we can do a demographics discussion, so which would be good rather than anecdotal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I'd say that probably would be very useful.
Did I still do that, was it American family survey? That used to be quite interesting, but we stopped doing that.
Yeah.
I thought it was nice because they broke it down by sectors within communities, not just all of them.
And we have that. Yeah.
You may already. You guys may already know some of that.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's transition to talking about our results and again, we started this. Maybe five, six years ago where we looked at the results policies and actually. Say, really made them extremely relevant because you set priorities. For informing the budget process and if results don't inform the budget process. It's like, where are you for your, this is what your executive, your library director, so um. We have three um. Three, in terms of prioritization, three was highest priority, increased attention or investment is needed. Two was, we're good, we'd stay, stay the course. Um, in this, we either means you've given additional resource in the past and you're you're operationalizing that. Or you reached an appropriate level of support and you're kind of where you need to be. Or then, of course, we had to get a little fancy and say two plus indicated that we should stay the course. But if resources become available, we should consider some additional, okay, just reminding everybody. And one was the lowest, it's important, but maybe there's another way to get there, partnership, other things like. But again, if it's on here, it's important. So if you don't want to take something off, you know, this is your opportunity as well. So these, everybody's good with the prioritization? Okay, so we'll, let's just go through comments by section. And. Go with, yeah, let's just start. And you have what you did last year on here as well and your materials, so you can look and see what you did because again, you're. You're kind of like moving a um. A battleship here, right? So. It's not a, not a speed. Sport, no, no, I want to motorboat.
Yeah.
So um. So let me see where you came from here. Okay, so. Let's say you in terms of, one, and actually what we did in the past was we actually. I'm missing that. I have in front of me. Because I'm just looking to see, yeah, you gave, I'm trying to see if you. If you just had one line, you prioritized it, but otherwise you prioritize.
Yes.
Yeah, we've the.
So let's start with number one. Residents find physical digital materials when and where they want them and obtain the help they need to make choices. So we gave it a.
Two.
Which is a, you know, state of courts. Thoughts about that?
I think one factor to consider is we are in the middle of. A very extensive re-catalog. Recategorizing of all of our materials. So I guess my request would be to not make this three this year because we're. All our energy is going to be focused on continuing what we're doing.
I have to admit, when I first read through them, I thought, you know, this needs a three. And then I thought about it and I thought, I remembered, okay, that means that we're putting all our energy towards it and I thought. There's a lot of things we're putting all of our energy, energies towards and so I I we thought and thought, no, just stay the course.
You definitely don't want everything, I mean. It's about you guys making choices together.
Right.
So is it two still okay with?
Yeah.
All right, moving on, residents access programs and services that stimulate discussion, curiosity, literacy and appreciation of reading. And you gave it a two last time.
Yeah.
Stay the course. And yeah, residents explore and discuss topical issues and it's safe and neutral environment and you gave that two as well.
Yeah.
Right. And but, you know, I'm just gonna think. If if you will stop me if you want to have more discussion on any of these, okay, but I wouldn't expect this to be changing a whole lot. Number two, residents under common pipes and civil services that the library provides. You gave this a three last time. So do you want to talk about that and?
Well, we're sub, we're down in the sub results, right?
Number two.
Oh, two, sorry.
Yeah, so you gave that a three because you obviously felt like a lot of the newcomers and it was an issue. So you must have done a lot more last year around this. Coming back out of the, you know, COVID slowdown.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a priority.
Yeah.
It's a good point.
Would that include the staff um explaining to people, oh, we closed the library because. And all this new, if that is included in this.
Yes, I basically I'd say however you vote on this. We we are going to be out full force. Getting the word out about changes we're making and temporary spaces and and what what new buildings look like and. Yes.
I feel like the level that we're at now is the level that we should be at because we're doing a lot in this area.
Well, I also like the, I don't know if this falls under it, but I would even think all the outreach that the library put in place. In the last couple of years, that also to me, I mean, there's been a lot done, so maybe it's more of a. Stay the course of what we're doing.
It's kind of a two.
Yeah.
Keep doing a lot.
Keep doing a lot.
Okay.
And you know, when we say three, it means do more. Put more into the budget for this. That we're doing now.
It's all pretty more. Good question, so yeah.
Right, so I think two is good.
They may need extra resource.
And maybe, and maybe what we're talking about is a two plus because in all likelihood, we will be. Coming to you with a budget that's. Will probably increase this.
Okay, okay, that is good.
Um, next one, residents enjoy the library as gathering space, meeting space, cultural center for community and non-identity and support. You know, and last time you gave that. Eight, three, do you want to talk about what that this whole section? Got to be a three, was that a COVID related?
I think a lot of it had to do with the bond projects that they're geared towards. Creating gathering and meeting spaces. And we're, we are putting a significant amount of money towards that.
So what are your thoughts for this coming year?
I I wouldn't say it's. Still, it's going to be, it's going to be the biggest piece of the budget, because we're going to start construction in Redmond and.
Well, and to me, it seems like. That that's a really, especially in this time period, that seems like a really important. Issue to make people realize that, yes, it's it's a safe environment and to make sure people understand that. People don't feel they're safe environments or community anymore.
So give it three. And then that'd be the same for the browsing, reflection, research. You know, reflection, pretty.
The only weird twist I have on this is. This will probably be the most difficult year. To do this with, we are going to create disturbances. Because we're going to shut down three buildings and, well, by the end of the year. Next twelve months, four buildings. And put people in temporary spaces and it'll be disruptive.
So should we make that a two, just kind of stay the course? Do what we can do, yeah.
I don't know, I mean, if you're, if you know the problem is coming. And we could be proactive in addressing it. Shouldn't we do that?
We're making it.
It should be a three because we know we're going to have a problem. And we should throw the resources at it to avoid the problem as much as possible. We do a two, it just means stay the course and maybe not putting up into the budget.
Yeah, it's, I would go, I could go either way on this, that the the reality is. Just the the one disruption, Redmond's a big example, if we're going to go from twenty thousand square feet to eight thousand. Five thousand, uh, and at the same time, um. There are resources going into making that temporary, so which would be an argument for making that a three because we are going to put money, if we didn't. I guess if you said this was a one. Uh, we would probably come back and say, well, I guess we won't have a temporary services in all the areas where we're closing libraries or something.
But I'm looking at at number two there, when we say residents know the type of services and we stay the course. On this one, we do have to have more information going up on this specific topic.
So should we do a two plus?
I I think a three is probably.
In this one. This one.
In my mind, it's true.
Yeah, whatever.
I don't think it's a priority because there is going to be so much movement and destruction that. You know, we can make it as easy as possible for for the community to access those services.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This way they know it's a priority, we're supporting that.
Yeah, I feel like, I feel like the preparation for all of this has been. Good, but I'm sure things will come up as all these things happen, right?
Well, it's when you prepare and then there's when it happens.
The crux will happen in January, so if you are leaving the country, I suggest that's a good time to do it.
For instance, I prepared for putting here early.
Yeah.
Ran into a problem.
At least that first, that first month is going to be a challenge.
Yeah, next few years, okay, so the last. Uh, results policy is obtaining information to resolve any issue and for questions, skills, et cetera. And the first bullet is residents obtain the information they need to fully participate in community decision making. And and I want me say that you so far no one has changed any of the language on these results bullets, but this, you know, you can. But you gave this a two last time.
Yes, my confusion is the community decision making, you're not. Maybe I'm confused on that.
It's what's going on in the community. Out there, so we we facilitate. People getting information. So they know what's going on in the community and they get involved as part of building a neighborhood and community.
And and being, having the resources that you need to be able to be a good citizen, to vote and to. Participate fully in. Life in Deschutes County.
And I get more and more pessimistic about this. And I get more and more pessimistic about this album. This result. It's like, are we just beating our heads against the wall? I mean, it's, it's almost as bad as trying to get teens into the library. That's, at least we do something that has a result. This, I have no idea whether the results. Or this. Isn't our role even? To put effort into this thing. I mean, I was, I was the one who originally proposed it when we had the results policy. And that was very idealistic.
So you're a little discouraged to have this policy or?
I'm not sure, whatever we do will make an iota of difference. Maybe this is something we should be looking at with partners instead of us.
Well.
Which is what we do.
Yeah, that's.
Rephrases that to say we're doing this. This makes it sound like what we need to do. Maybe emphasis should be what you're doing, doing the partnerships because then we can get something. More bang for our bucks and our, our limited resources, both staff and I. And have more focus.
Yeah.
An outcome that we can measure. Because I'm gonna come here and say, where do you measure?
I think that's, that's been our approach anyway. And I, and I think that. The overall results policy of um giving people the information they need to answer a question or resolve issues. You know, that's part of being a citizen. And I think that is a core library value. Uh, if they have a question, where do you send them? Well. To the library, you know, whether it's to learn about the history of an issue or to learn about different points of view or to have a. Community discussion. And we do that with partners. So it's not like we're reinventing.
Is it more of a one perhaps where it's?
Up to one, I'm just thinking in terms of reality, how do we accomplish something like this?
Yeah, and you can take. Multiple things we do, like the example, working with the League of Women Voters at election time, we co-sponsor programs with them.
The whole, I, I guess the way I have interpreted this is that, so there's. Some, there's a problem within the community and there's a group of people who are working towards. Homelessness, let's say homelessness is a problem. And so the library is a place that they can come to, to find the information. To help them in a community conversation about it or to research. I guess that's how I've interpreted.
So you see his core function.
Yeah, I guess that's how I see it. I don't know, I wrong, that's all.
So. Is there, I mean, good discussion, is your sense kind of stay the course on this, knowing that you're working with a lot of others?
Yeah, I think continue to do what we're doing.
Yeah, as long as I said, we have, clarify here. So Todd, understand what it is. This supposed to mean.
Yeah.
Without changing the language, unless we really are concerned.
And just to go back to the results monitoring to show at least how I interpreted uh before was. A lot of this came down to, we have book a librarian services, book a speaker, book a trainer. So to help people with business, nonprofits, career and job development, technology and legal assistance. Uh, historical academic research, lawyer in the library, tax prep programs. Um, and then just our general rack card information in the libraries as well are always. That we are addressing this topic.
Okay.
I'm not, no, that's, that's more of my concern is to what we do. Internally. This, I think we've. We want to see an outcome, but actually a result of this. We have to be working like Chantel, we work with other partners out there. We keep it going.
Yeah, and that.
A lot of these are one-shot deals. Book a librarian, do your taxes.
But those.
Beginning and end of this. Those are level of effort.
But they're, they're also partnerships. Just, wait, and then I'm not even, I didn't even list the League of Women Voters here, but um just. Uh, but, but I'm only throwing that not to justify it, but to say, this is how I'm interpreting it, which might help you say, well, you're interpreting it. Not quite how we want this to happen. Uh, and in which case you need to clarify.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I'm not understanding what it is, Ray, that you think. Is nothing else.
That's how we interpret this. But the staff is saying, you do partnerships. I'm saying that's what we, that's what I think we ought to be doing. To meet this results policy because we can't do it a homelessness.
Okay.
Okay, what are we gonna do?
Yeah.
We can supply information with facilities that are, that are neutral. Discussion grounds. But that's not gonna get us. To a measurable outcome. In a year or two or whatever. Even saying we're progressing towards a goal. Both goals are being. Really focused on and continuously worked on by other organizations that we should partner. And we are partnering with it. So if the staff understands, Todd understands, this is what we really want. Not necessarily the book a librarian, the, the do a tax. The one and then done stuff. How do we actually tackle the bigger problem of, of houselessness? How do we tackle the bigger problem?
So you, what, what you're saying, Ray, is to add participate in.
No, no.
The and partnership.
Oh, he wants to make sure Todd understands. And I think Todd's examples addressed all these bullets, correct? This whole category.
No, this is the time you give, I mean, think of the boards that never have these discussions with their, I mean, you're constantly trying to guess. So. It's very helpful to clarify what I'm hearing here is. Stay the course, but understand that we, this is, we see you working in regular partnerships to help accomplish this result.
Yeah, I'm worried if we do that.
Yeah.
It's gonna take more staff resource. Not financial resources, but financially, we're gonna think staff. But it's our staff resources that are gonna be impacted with this one. If we're really going out there and participating full-time. With other community members.
Well, so, I mean.
So maybe they should go to either two plus or three.
I, I guess the, the things you should be asking, are you satisfied with the current level of service? Or do you want to see that increase? In which case it would go up.
Yeah, I, in my mind, if we're. Going to go out there and work with other organizations. Really focusing on a specific problem and do it with a higher level of effort with staff. Then this has to go up to at least a, a two plus or three.
I think the level at which we're doing it is adequate now. I mean, we have those partnerships in place and we are doing the work. And I don't think. Increased effort would necessarily be beneficial right now based on the other things.
I, I think that increased effort for trying to build libraries and do all this, uh, there's only so much we can ask staff to do.
Right, even if we added staff, I think.
But I, I guess I still don't understand because it, it says that residents are obtaining the information they need. It doesn't say that the library is leading it or anything, interpreting what you're saying is that the library is gonna lead that or something.
No, I'm saying right now what the library does in terms of. The, a specific event. That's where we're leading inside, or but it's an event.
That's only a part of it. I mean, it's also.
And what I'm saying is Chantel and Todd are saying, no, we're out there with partnerships, working on the greater issue.
Yeah.
You know, housing has been the obvious one.
Yeah. Yeah, so let me come back. It sounds like you're interpreting it all in the same way. And. There's a general sense that, given everything else you have in your plates, in terms of resources, which you put a lot into. Kind of stay the course. In, in general, is what I'm hearing.
That's what I'd like to do.
Yeah, I think so.
I had a really good discussion about that. Okay, it's huge. Alright, let's go on. Everybody's okay. New residents obtain information in a supportive environment and use library resources to sign. To assist in their transition. And you gave us the two plus last time. Which was probably because of all the new people.
I thi- I think it's still a two plus, given what the discussion that we had about community issues. I mean, if we, if we can help people. Make that transition and learn about our area and learn about. What it means to live here. I think that's great.
And this doesn't just apply to new residents. As we see more and more people struggling. Without finding affordable housing and just being able to live here. Often people are making that transition, leaving a home or an apartment that they can learn or to live with, what, what happened. I see this.
As a drop new.
Yeah.
Well, that, that is a good point.
Very, that is a good point.
I see. Um, this and the next one down as, as priorities.
So, but I, I don't want to leave this because you said something important and I, I see everything else kind of going up. Do you want to change the language here, say?
How about dropping new and then to, to assist their life transitions in central Oregon? Because then that.
Oh.
Life transition.
Yeah, so I mean, it's like either you just moved here or maybe you just. Uh, you know, you have a housing change or you lost your job or some major event in your life that you know, need help transitioning with. It changes, it changes the intent of it slightly, but, but it, but it also is way more expansive.
Do you like, I'm looking at staff, you know, so.
Does that make sense?
People are getting at here is, it's more than just the new people moving. There's nothing wrong with having something very specific on green people moving, but. And raised an interesting question here. Is it more just helping people with transitions, whether they're new or. Or having some other issue.
So how are you gonna learn that?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I can't see how.
My like, I, I agree with the concept. I'm, I'm just struggling with the. What I'm afraid of is watering it down so that it becomes so. Broad.
Yeah, yeah.
We can't.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah. This is very targeted.
Yeah.
Right?
I think it's a really good point, though. I just, and then I'm trying to think, is, is that, is that kind of covered elsewhere and?
That's what I was.
Yeah.
For me, this one, the way it's written, it, it puts emphasis on transitioning into central Oregon, central Oregon emphasis. But if you do a life transition, you're focusing more on the person or the family person.
Right, yes, true.
Alright, this, this was originally for, for immigrants coming to a new resident. And then that's a immigrant minority groups. And mainly it was sort of Hispanic.
Oh, I didn't think that at all. I mean. No, uh, because we had, we had separate, we had separate breakouts on this. But it, there's always been a focus on people who are moving here that don't know the area.
Yeah.
And all different kinds of people move here.
But it. It, it, there was one.
There was a sub though, on Latino services.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah. So what is your topic? Because it's, it's targeted. And it follows some of your demographic issues you've talked about.
This is a, this is a field of result.
No.
I mean, we do target currently new residents, communication. So we welcome them to our community.
Yeah.
We, we try to get them set up as quickly as we can with library cards. And just let them know what we're, what we have to offer. So I don't know if that's where this belongs or not, but that is, I know we do. We have really focused probably the last six, eight years on people moving in.
Yeah.
With monthly welcome.
Yeah.
And get your library.
And you can measure that. You can measure the number of people and getting cards and all of that.
Cards have gone up.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is great.
So. Well, and there's another result that says results. Residents find the physical and digital materials when and where they want them and obtain the help they need to make choices.
Yeah.
So that kind of addresses the global, if you're going through a transition. You. You can find the help you need to.
Whatever, if it's homelessness or unemployment or whatever.
Right, or health challenges.
I mean, it's really a good discussion, but it's, I, I think we came back around.
Yeah.
To, okay, let's, if I'm not mistaken, to, is it still a two plus though? This year, or is it kind of stayed in course? You gave it a little extra, the two plus meaning. You know, if you have a little more resources, you could throw some more into it, but how do you see it this year?
Yeah, I think if the measure is. Like the number of library cards being given out, number of packets being given out.
So.
Is that's a level of effort? Whether they do anything with it or not.
Yeah.
We don't know.
Did you give it a two?
Doesn't quite, I don't know that that, that quite meets.
Well.
What I think that should intend is.
And.
Then if it's. To really. Help them. Do something. Make their life better. I can't measure that.
Yeah.
And a- also things that I reported on this year were. Um, our targeted programming, especially. To, um. Yeah, to the Latinx community, going, going out to apartment complexes and setting up programs and partnering with. Ten or twenty other agencies to do that, um, which again, that's an effort. People show up. They experience it and they go, I don't have the measurement of how their life changed. But it's more than just saying. We, we did some new cards.
Yeah.
It's, it's the effort that we're putting into uh making those connections out in the community. Especially with new residents. A big piece of that is um just getting. The idea that we exist and that we have services that are there for them.
Yeah.
Uh, is, is something that we.
Do you guys see this as a two plus?
It was a two plus last time.
It was two plus.
We should just keep it as a two plus.
I would support that. I think it's important, given the number of people that are moving to this area. I mean, I think that need is still there and it's still big.
So keep it as new residents.
Okay.
Yeah, and just keep it the way it is after.
Okay. The whole reason you have this review is not just. It's prioritized, but it's also typically raises questions and say, are we all on the same page? So.
Are you okay with that, Ann?
Yeah. Okay, good, that was good. Especially residents have a support they need to improve their technology literacy skills. You gave that a three last time. Discussion.
Was that?
So Zoom related? Yeah, what was some of the?
What, what?
Technology literacy. We were thinking, I mean, basically we're thinking that there's a, there's a technology divide. The young kids and everybody growing up with the technology, you know, how to do everything with computers now. And grandma and grandpa have to ask them.
Yeah. Yeah.
But the other, then a transition to their communities, part segments of the community that don't have access. Through the internet at all. And so we had our hotspots going out there.
Well, I think that's the next one, isn't it? Have access to the digital world. Yeah. Yeah, I think that one is, I definitely have that next one be a three, but I think.
I think you got a high rating.
Because.
In particular because of, because the whole world turns. Yeah, we found ourselves really assisting people on just how to connect in their daily life, which had not been true.
Right. So you give it a two then?
I would say two on that one and three on the access to the digital world.
I don't know, the.
Are we having residents come into the library and ask for. For classes on using the computer? I mean, that's still.
They're not popular. Yeah, I think the, the ones that are most popular are like the open labs where people bring in their own devices. They need help with their own stuff.
So I said it.
Yeah, I just heard from one of the community librarians, they had no, a no show for uh like a class on. I remember what it was.
So this would seem like a two is more appropriate on this one.
Which one? Okay, with this, okay, or something, but you guys decide.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's. I mean, there, there are more people. Having to actually. Learn the programs, be able to master. A lot of the programs that are out there, the acts. Who don't know where to go and how to do it, other than pay for it. And these are a lot of the people who can't afford to sit there and pay for it.
And again, it's when they come into those things with their devices, that's when we start helping them.
Yeah, but we should be going out there with the classes specifically on that.
She said, nobody showed up at the.
Well, what was the class that we? It's, it's be- beyond that, it's, it's, that's been the trend for years. When we do like a specific type of class.
It's more just in time, what people are wanting.
Exactly. I got. Exactly, I got a new device, I don't know how to use it.
Yeah.
Um, my. Uh, and I don't wanna cloud any the decision, I'm just thinking. Realistically, in the next twelve months. Um. Our staff is going to be just handling change.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and. I don't see, I don't see this as the time to. To start upping what we're doing, I don't, I I don't disagree that this is important. Um.
If it's on here, it's important.
It's it's kind of like one of those things where I would hope to see us as we're coming out and. Opening new buildings.
Probably closing several libraries. I mean, so.
Yeah, so how how much can we do?
So, I don't know, I just, I don't know that this is the time at all to change.
That that would be my reason to keep it at a two. Um, but I but saying that, just realizing that. There's probably a lot of these that I I'm really looking forward to discussion we have here. When we've got Redmond open and.
Yeah.
Branches open and we're. We're really starting to say, well, what?
What's next?
What's what's kind of?
Yeah, yeah, what can, what, yeah, what can we do with?
Won't that be next to not?
Yeah, now this year, we're kind of, I think this year is the focus on for the staff and for us on getting the buildings going and.
Good point.
Good, okay, so everybody good, I mean, good discussion, so two for that and. Well, then, would you still, would you give that a two as well, the digital world restrictions and needs?
Yes.
Given what you just said.
Yeah.
I mean, it's still important, you're still putting a lot of resource to it, but. You're 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 budgeting for the reality of your work in the coming year, so I'm hearing. And the last one was.
Cause with that one. That they with a. Mark asking for more or changing. Actually reduce the budget. We have to keep up with the technology, how we access it. This is not saying we have to put more money into it, but it's a major emphasis. The technology changes so fast.
Yeah.
We have to prepare for it, if we do it two, it says.
I'd be down more as a one.
Yeah, one would be and two would be like.
Yeah.
We're like, we are focusing on this and.
Yeah, I I wouldn't. I wouldn't interpret your two as if. Uh, especially if Mark said, hey, we we've got a upgrade in this next tech technology.
Correct.
Um. I wouldn't be looking at this and saying, well, the board doesn't agree with you, so we're not. Um, okay, uh. And and in all reality, the way he works, usually the next tech technology ends up saving us. Money.
Right.
Okay.
Alright, last one, residents have difficulty accessing libraries, so we gave that a two plus last time, so discussion about that.
Would that be really important at this stage? Because people are going to have to access a little trailer now, Eastside Sisters Library and. Is that? Should we keep it at two plus? I think so.
I think if you're interpreting that way, then I'd agree with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, we wanna do everything we can to make sure people are getting the services they need during a period of disruption.
Okay. Bravo.
Um, just said. I'm just thinking, I'm 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 planning the budget.
Yeah.
Just saying like something like this, that I could see us coming back and saying, hey, we found some innovative ways that we can get out. Into the community and. Broaden what we're doing while this is happening.
Yes.
Um. Okay, I mean, that would. If you saw a budget thing that did that, that would. Tie back into.
Yeah.
Good.
Now, that's what I wanted you asking for.
I know, so that's the, that's always the next question.
Yeah, that's the plus.
Um, let's, why don't we take a little stretch? Like, yeah, really good work, that great, um, come back when the. With the big hand gets to free, we'll start back and we'll talk about. Eastman Library, but really good job, there's so many boards that do not do this work. You know, like, what are you thinking? So there's this guessing game going on and. Just, I really thought the discussion that you raised in important questions and. So, okay, let's take a break. Alright, so we've got ten, we've got an hour and fifteen minutes left, we have three items. We wanna talk about the process for reaching a decision on Eastman. Wanna just check in on Robo Lane, land and just see kind of um. What what you're thinking is on that and we want to leave at least fifteen minutes or so to talk about. The um lawyer's letter around the abstaining, so kinda. I'm gonna kinda try to keep us on track for that. Um, so Eastman Library, what to frame the discussion? Um. You are going to need to make a decision about Eastman. And so the the purpose of this discussion is how are we going to make that decision, so kind of like. Um. When we end this discussion, hopefully by. You know, this two. Eleven before eleven, hopefully, um. How should we, how should you make this discussion, decision, what do you know? What do you need to know? What would the timeline be? And just check in and see if you kind of have. A consensus around the direction you're going, and this is a topic of great importance to. People out to the community as well, so that's kind of where we'd like to be, maybe in. By ten to eleven or so, what's the, what 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 direction are you going? Everybody good? Okay, so. Um. What do we, kind of, what are the the things that you know, what are the kind of drivers at this?
A couple of things are um. One, we have in the budget. Uh, funds to remodel Eastman. And. So part of that is, do we, can we free up some of that money for other projects? Um. Or are we still committing to that? The lease runs out. On, I'm gonna say December thirty first, twenty twenty five. At this point, if we move forward with our timeline with the Stevens Ranch Library, we would be done in the fall of twenty twenty five. Um.
So say that again.
Uh, the the. The library that we're planning on building at Steve, at Stevens Ranch is due to be completed in fall, let's just say October of twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Um. And we had held off this discussion until we knew if we were committing to Stevens Ranch. Just knowing that this is. A building that is on the east side. And would alter what we do with these back.
Then how much do we pay for Eastman?
It's.
Fourteen thousand five hundred rounding up.
A month?
That's just rent, it's not.
That's just a room, yeah. Okay. So these are kind of the important benchmarking things that you need to. And and make one impacts the other, other things.
The distance between the this and Stevens Ranch.
Um. Yeah, a- and I'm. I looked that up before we talked about, the last time we talked about it, it was like one.
It's under two miles.
It's it's about one and a half miles from the Eastman Library to Stevens Ranch, but men's gonna verify.
Okay, between um Stevens Ranch and.
He's been.
He's been. So. One and a half miles? And that's driving.
Yeah.
More on your bike.
It's faster if you could fly, but.
I know. I just didn't wanna close. There'll be technology into the future. Yeah, I know, I'm reading a book about that. Yeah. Okay.
Um, th- those are some of, so some of the things um I would like you to think about is. What other information would you like to have, before we have? Uh, we'll put on a future agenda of making this decision. What other things would you like to know? Um. There are other things to consider as well, and that is. Nothing has to be an all or nothing. And that could be um. For example. Maybe the board would want to say, well, we're going to. Radically. Um, cut down on the services at Eastman, but we wanna keep a portion of that to meet some need. Um, whether that's us putting a kiosk out there or um. Um, that's something that we could consider as well, at least for research, we could get a little more information on. Right now, we rent six, six storefronts.
Two, yeah, two point one.
Two point four months?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, two point four?
Yeah, that's from. He's been to Wilder's Way intersection.
Okay, that's more than I thought.
Yeah. So in saying that we rent six storefronts, so you're saying maybe we could. What, bring it down to just one storefront, put a kiosk in there.
Yeah.
So this is the, this working five, it is six storefronts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it was six. Yeah.
Five.
Well, it's. And I'm not, and I don't have, I don't have a plan in mind for that, I just kind of thinking of the full range of.
Of possibilities.
Possibilities, cause at that point, we if we started looking at. Kiosk things, the board might also wanna say, well, actually, we could be more strategic and these. Uh, for communities instead of that one, but just something to consider.
Okay.
I'm trying to think of those. No.
Other. So what, yeah, what questions? Well, I I have something that, can we start asking?
Yeah, 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 sure.
So one of the things that I'd like to know is, I'd like to know exactly what services. Are utilized at the Ben, Eastman, like, for instance, I'd like to know the number of pe- kids who come to Story Hour. Um, the number of people who, how often the the computers are used. Um. How often people come in and actually utilize the librarians, asking them for assistance in doing some kind of research? I guess I'd like to know those kinds of things.
Okay, great.
Or like the percentage of people that use it just for holds pickup and.
Right.
Drop off.
Right. That could, cause I know, I know somebody, you guys have said that it's one of the. Busiest libraries as far as picking up books on hold.
It is, it is. A hold, pick up and drop off location for sure.
So I I I know. But I'd like to know the other.
Okay. And let's say the meeting room gets used fairly regularly, it's it's very, very well used there. Um, as to the public computer usage, I think overall that is decreasing. Throughout the district, it's it's getting less and less of a of a thing to use public computers.
You think that's just people now?
That's just, it it is a trend and it's been going down and it's continued, so I would assume Eastman would also be similar in that it's.
Yeah, I mean, so so get getting all that.
So I guess in looking at the meeting room um usage, I'd like, I guess, a comparison to the other. So, how does it compare to the.
Right.
Message in other libraries, never.
Do you have anything on parking there and how are are people frustrated? Are they able to find parking?
The answer is yes.
Uh, yeah. Frustration, yes.
Uh, yeah, that's probably the biggest complaint we get out there. Um. Is the lack of.
So you don't want, just wanna know how the Eastman is being utilized, you also wanna know just kind of how. What you're hearing from people.
And pluses and minuses of that location.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, I would say, when we look at the statistics for usage. We normalize it. For square foot. So we can compare apples to apples if we're looking at Redmond, the fine downtown. Cause square footage is gonna make a huge difference.
Is um Stevens Ranch gonna have parking?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good.
Um, I feel like too, if Robert was here, I think the other thing with Eastman to consider is. That is, as a lease space, we don't have, you know, uh, control necessarily over the maintenance of it.
Okay.
So, for example, when a roof, when the roof starts leaking, we call the property manager, but we are at their. Mercy as to when they actually will address. You know.
Okay.
So again, that's.
It's a it's a plug to minds, yeah.
Yeah.
And they are very, they are, they are very, you know, responsive, but you know, it is, it might not be as responsive as their own.
Right.
You have, there's a certain line of control.
Correct, yes.
I'll put that in the known.
One thing that I would like to know is the cost of operating that facility.
Yeah.
And the staffing burden, like, how many people does it take to operate that space? Um.
We'll get it.
And what, you know, like, to get a total picture of what it costs to operate.
Good. Is, is there any way to find out? To poll the people who use the, to use this facility? How they're feeling about the possibility of making that change from, i- if, I'm just saying if. If we decided that we were gonna shut down the Eastman Library and just put like a kiosk there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that, how how people feel about now having to go to, I make a choice of going to downtown or going to Stevens. So I, just to kind of communicate with the patrons.
Great, yeah, that's great idea.
Okay. Is there a timeline, like, I know. You're. So if you wanna have this discussion, when do you wanna make a decision by, is there, is there something driving the time of this decision?
Well, the first thing that it's gonna drive, it's just giving us time to pull together all the information.
Right.
Um. I'm trying to, I'm trying to channel Greg now, I think he's anxious to just get some clarity about what we're doing. Their building budget to know, is that money available or not?
And people have been asking too, I mean, I think the public wants to know.
Yeah. Right?
I. I would say. That we should make a, have this discussion within one to three months.
That makes sense. So you wanna target like for February or something?
That would, that would be, I think that would work well for me.
Does that give you guys enough time to pull the information together?
Yeah.
And then for us to make a decision at the February board meeting?
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, if it's not, I will also let you know. I think, I think we can aim for that, my only, my only.
Yeah.
My only caveat is the fact that uh, the amount of.
Okay.
Of change we're gonna do in December and January that that might.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it sounds like, um, if I'm reading everyone correctly, and I like to do mind reading, that. You, you need to have some more of this information, you're not really at a place as a group to.
No.
Make a decision, like, to have, you're not close to consensus, yeah, I don't even wanna check for consensus, you need to know some more stuff. Is that? The, that?
I've had a couple of residents asking, what would be the possibility if Eastman? If we do decide to to close that, of. Relocating another library in another part of the district from the leased facility. So, in that, I guess my question is.
Yeah.
The money that is now going into Eastman, if if we do decide to close that. Where, how is that then absorbed in the budget?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
And staffing and all of that, so. So we are, you know, we have this one library, we did decide to do something with it. You know, how can that then move in a different direction?
I think that's a good.
Right, that's a good question, and I, and I, so another, another bit of information that would be valuable along those lines. Is how much money did we put into that facility originally, like? How much money did we put into that, that leased space to get ready to be a library?
Yeah.
Because there was, there were some costs there.
Well, but but we do have some money set aside right now for the Eastman remodel, correct?
Right, right, yeah.
So we do have, so to find out if there's a balance there, or something like that.
Right, like about how much. Along Anne's line, though, uh, the kiosk, what would, what does that look like? And for that facility, if we're gonna, you know, go to something.
Yeah, and it could be more than one, there's, we'll get to that information, but as, since it is such a popular hold, pick up and drop off. It is actually ideal for something of that nature for services.
Okay, so I've I've heard more than that one from Anne's question, I've heard.
Yeah.
Like, what are some of the other scenarios?
And just. And just part, and part of that is, yes, you could take the. Like we could open up a service, well, what we probably couldn't do is use a bond money to do that because. It, I mean, we can't add a new thing.
Okay, that makes sense.
But something. But that doesn't mean we can never do it, because we did East Bend without any bond money. Yeah, that's. That's a, and actually, I think it's a really. Big. Thought for us on kind of the next steps. Once, once we have completed all of our building projects is. We've, we've got a whole array of what we can do to serve in the future. Because, because of technology moving. Sorry. Yes, sorry. Just, yeah, that's, there's a whole range of what we can do. Moving forward, especially now that we have a centralized place to process materials.
I think you. Well, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I think we should check with the bond attorney. My understanding on the bond is as soon as. If we meet the. What we promised in the bond measure and there's money left over. We can use it for capital. And capital for operations. And this leasing of the new facility. Somewhere else would be a capital investment. Even though we're leasing it. It's a physical structure that adds to the assets of it.
I don't think it is.
Yeah.
But I think we have already asked the bond attorney.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we will, I, just for clarity, we are going to focus mostly on. Statistics around East Bend. For, for your decision making. Okay.
All right, anything else on East Bend?
If, and if, I'm sure. You're going to be cooking dinner tonight and think of three other questions. Please send, send them to me and that'll help us in our. In our report.
Yeah, my, Cynthia's point, question is, is pretty cool. What are the people who use East Bend?
Yeah.
Right, and so we need to have a really good survey on that, not just, you know, people walking in and asking.
Well, and, and especially, you know. Taking Anne's idea, if that is a, if that's a direction we want to go, that's why I'd really like to know what the. The patrons, what they would, what they, what they utilize the most and what they would want to see.
Knowing that, I mean, it's also hard to ask people. Like, they know what they know.
Right.
They don't know.
Yeah.
You know, when you ask them about something new, it's hard to. But they do know what they know. So if they say, well, we really hate. The parking or it's really inconvenient or, so it's kind of more like. Ask them what they think of that.
Right, because they aren't going to know all the choices and, and the. Most people. Have trouble envisioning. A change, but, but it's, but it's instructive to say. What do you need in library facilities and what are you using here and what do you find valuable?
You're using now, basically, you may help drive anything that, any other.
What's important to you, what, what gets in the way of you being a good user of the facility or something?
Right, so if we, like, for instance, if we were to determine that that particular location is so hard to get into and out of that, that. If we were going to do a kiosk. In that area, it might not be there. It might be across the street or it might be down the road, but.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
You should also ask them why they like that. Not all just.
Yeah.
What I don't like.
Right, yeah. What, what do you, what do you like and what do you find useful?
Why do you use this?
Yeah.
Why is this your primary?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good. Okay, so it sounds like. And if things come to you more and you want to know. But gives you like two months to, two, two and a half months to prep for.
Can you do a, can you do a survey in two and a half months?
Yeah.
Okay.
She says confident.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. All right, all right, anything else on East Bend?
All right, so let's transition to talking about the Roble Lane land. Is kind of, um. See where we are in terms of. We, you are, not we, in terms of, um. How do you see the next steps? And do you want?
Yeah, just to kind of. Frame it, this one is not as critical a discussion as land we have. We don't pay taxes on it. It's owned, it's owned by. I'm going to say this in a weird way, the library, not the bond. Um, we transferred it out of the bond, so it's, the library's paid for it through the reserve funds. This is another one where, um, just trying, I wanted to think about how we want to. Want, make this decision or not make this decision about. Is this a property that we want to sell now and just have it off of our books? Is it one that we want to? Hold on to so that we have options in the future, especially knowing. How hard it was to find, it is to find land. And then there's a, there's an option for holding it for the future. There's an option for holding it for some time that we may want to sell it. And use, use those ones for some other service.
Todd, what's the actual size of that land and what did we pay for it?
It's, uh, it's about twelve acres and we paid one point three five million.
Good difference.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's one. Again, I just threw that on there as, because I get asked, people, we have people trying to buy it.
Have you had people approach you wanting to buy it?
I've had a couple of people that have asked about it.
Okay. Uh, is. Is Costco or Fred Myers or one of them, is that still in the works?
Answer is, uh, to, to be seen. Costco just went in front of the city council, asked for more parking. And, and has threatened to pull out of that project if they don't get it. So we're not sure where that is.
And do you know what, right now, what Costco's timeframe is? The timeline is?
Uh, it was within a couple of years, but it's, it's all.
It's all stalled.
It's pretty much stalled.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
Because.
Probably end up at Redmond's.
Yeah. And I can.
Yeah, I think.
I can tell you that my.
Doesn't have the demographics.
If you ask, if you ask for my opinion today.
Yeah.
I, I would say this is land that I would recommend holding on to.
That's what I would think.
Uh, it's, it's, it's an asset for us. Right. Yeah.
Cost of it's not killing us, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it is a potential site for a library in the future. I mean, we already own it. We know that eventually that area is going to be incorporated into Ben.
Right, right now, its value is, uh, I think been. Uh, affected by. The discussions that happened when we applied, so I think it's only going to become more valuable in the future when. Area plan is done for that area, I think its value will. Skyrocket.
I agree.
And, and again, I don't think this has to be an all or nothing. Decision, I mean, we could decide to use a portion of the property for a facility and sell the rest in the future, but I, I just think it gives us a lot of options to hold on to it.
Especially with Costco going in there, I think it's, it's going to make it more valuable.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's. Way more valuable than what we paid for it. And it will only increase in value as time goes on.
And there's nothing legally, um, that says that the library can't, can't buy land and hold on to it.
Well, the school district does it all the time.
You know, after our most recent experience, I would say that's.
After what experience?
Just trying to find land.
Right.
And, and. Central Oregon is, it, it behooves the board to look at, look into the future of possibilities.
This just becomes part of our capital assets. Are there maintenance costs required here?
Um, main costs.
You know, or reads in order.
Yeah, we had some minimal costs where we, we do. Uh, we pay our security company to go out and look every once in a while.
It's minimal cost.
It's minimal.
No roads to power or anything.
No, no, it's nothing.
Just get rid of the tall grasses in the fire season.
So minimal cost associated with holding on.
Yeah.
I'm kind of sensing, I mean, would you like to have a sense from, from the board where their, their thinking is on this?
Uh, I'm getting a sense.
Yeah.
And that will help me when people approaching us to say we, we're not.
You know, if you hold on to it until the city does an area plan.
Yes.
Probably will grow.
Yeah.
The price will automatically jump to, uh. What we already did for Stevens.
Right.
It's going to be a million dollars per acre instead of a hundred dollars. A hundred thousand per acre.
So.
Yep.
Option number two. Hold on for the future.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Have to say when the future is.
All right. And that gives us something, I mean, that's another one that the, the public has asked about too, like what are you going to do with that land? And you can say, well, we're just going to.
Yeah, I had somebody ask me the other day, what were your people in? I said. Right now, nothing. Well, it's good that you, I mean, it's important to have a discussion because people are asking and they don't want to think that you're being fooled.
Well, and that was something that we talked about when we bought the land originally was that this, this was a good investment, even if the land use. Application didn't go forward, it was, it was a smart investment for us to make, so I think that's.
But actually. Holding on to it just allows us more possibilities in the future.
You bet.
So like.
The public's going to ask, are you holding on to it for future library? Because I don't think they want to see a government agency going into the real estate investment business.
Yeah. I, I.
Are there any other agencies that have been dealing for that?
Yeah, and, and my mind, it's, that's the more valuable piece to us. Is flexibility in the future, especially because. Just knowing all the development that's going on out there and the number of houses that's going out there, we're going to have, we're going to have to figure out a way to serve that area. In the next twenty years. And so to be able to have some flexibility is. Is very valuable for us. You're right, I don't, I don't think we should be going out and buying land and sitting on it just to make money.
Right.
You're not real estate investors.
Exactly.
You don't want to be accused of that.
Yeah, no, and we, and that wasn't the end.
Then the obvious next question is, you were going to ask is. If you're holding into building another library or how are you going to afford to build a library?
Well, those are decisions to be made in the future.
When we get there.
Let's try to get these built.
Yeah. You're running with right now.
Well, and that's, and that's what we've talked about this building project forever is that this is a step. Towards providing the facility, library facilities that this county is going to need as it grows, so things like. Other delivery mechanisms, kiosks, other, other branches, I mean, those are all, this isn't, this isn't. This is going to be the be all and end all for all times. It's going to be a step along the way. So we will look at future facilities. As, as. We go.
That's an important. Statement for, you know, as a board. That, you know, we're not, this is not just. One and done kind of thing. And also looking at how library services are going to change in the future.
Right, yeah.
And how your community is going to change. Okay. So, wow, I feel like I have. Um, so let's transition to talking about. Um, abstention voting or abstaining voting and maybe Todd can set the stage for this discussion.
Yeah, well, the first thing I don't want this discussion to be is the gotcha. Hey, this is, it, this is more of. Uh, it came organically out of. Uh, Jennifer Palmer was talking to her insurance agent and he was asking about. Um, what, what we're doing and she mentions that we. He asked about the vote on Stevens Ranch. Uh, and he was concerned about. The fact that we had some extensions. And was concerned from a liability standpoint as our insurance agent and suggested that we talk to our attorney. Uh, to make sure that that was labor. Uh, so that's why I went to the attorney. And so this is. What I shared with you is the information I got back from the attorney asking if there were some issues around it, because before that, we had been focusing on Robert's rules of orders. Uh, not really focusing on is, is this, because I was not aware that this was a potential, uh, legal issue. So I just wanted to make sure that you had that in context. Um, I think it's good information for us because, um. I hadn't had any experience with abstractions really before the last couple of years. And just realized this is, this is. The attorney that the board has selected bringing you advice. And so I'm, I was just hoping to have a discussion around this, is what does this mean for us? Does this? Uh, what does that look like for us moving forward? And possibly looking at how it fits in with our policies.
Policies, yeah, and I think if you look at the, and it's a red. Uh, what Carolyn finally did, she kind of looked through the relevant policies and governance. Did you get that? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, your policies do call for. Robert's rules and she knows, while it is a duty that every member who has an opinion on the country to express it by his or her vote. Yet, um, you cannot be compelled to do so, and yet. Her, her email to Todd. Um, was. Basically giving the legal, her legal, um. Uh, opinion about. The guidelines around abstaining and voting, so I thought. It would be useful, or everybody thought, since it was raised, it'd be useful to talk about it and then talk about. Um, kind of. When it is appropriate, what your kind of sense of your guidelines are for that. Um, and everybody had a chance to read her. Um, her legal, have you all had a chance to read that?
It's been a while.
Okay, we'll take a minute, just take a, take a sec to read through that.
Can, can we ask a quick question? So. As a board, we can establish our own guidelines for what voting and abstention means. I, I got the feeling.
No, no.
Okay.
Right, no. But just to reaffirm those together.
Thank you.
Yeah, like, you know, conflict of interest, et cetera. It's pretty narrow.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah. I was, I was in Colorado and you sent this to us and my son-in-law is an attorney and I. I was like, really? I didn't know this. And so I went to Scott and I said, and I had him read what you sent and he said, oh, yeah, so they're, they're very strict rules.
Yeah.
No, okay.
It's just good to remind ourselves, I think, some of these things.
Yeah.
This may be kind of just a good reminder of. The law around this, but what, where are the slots, what comes, how key one is. Not the net. The meaning. And then isn't in your current policies, although. It's. You could, you could add it if you wanted. Right now, you do talk about Robert's rules.
I would point on the, the last. Sentence of the last, in the second last paragraph, while there is no statutory requirement. For members to vote, is there a legal duty? Why is there, if there's no statutory requirement? Why is it their legal, our statutory was legal?
Were you a language program?
All of it, what she's saying is, it's kind of ambiguous, yeah, if you. You should vote. That's why you were elected. But on the other hand, you're not required to. But on the other hand.
You are.
You are required. This is, this is straight legal least to me, it's like, yeah, you can if you want to, but you don't have to, you don't want to, but you really are required to do it, but you're not required to do it. So it's like, oh, okay, this is the advice I give for most attorneys, it's like. You are the, you're the one that's going to court, not me, I'll give you advice, but I'm not going with you. So it's like, okay, what do you want to say? I've always felt, you know, I was the first to abstain. And the reason for abstaining was. Say, I'm not sure if this is what we really wanna do. I'm not convinced, yes or no, so I'm gonna say. At this time, I'm not willing to take a vote. It's interpreted as a no vote. Because essentially, if you don't vote, it's a majority, it's a no vote, you go like, okay, if you're gonna vote, yes. If you're inclined, then you vote yes. If you're really ambiguous. Or are convinced, then abstention is less than a no vote. But in effect, if you know the majority is gonna vote yes anyway. You're just such a question of opinion, not saying, no, I'm absolutely against it. There are still questions in the lines.
That's not the way I look at it, okay? Seems to me that. If you. If you're not convinced that it's the right decision. Then you should vote no. And if you're convinced that this is the right decision, oh, yes. So, it seems like, and I I would think. The abstaining would be. If, you know, if. I would have abstained from voting on the um Stevens Ranch. If I owned land right next to there, it's like, no, I I. I would have a reason to abstain.
Conflict of interest.
Okay, alright, so that was mine, okay, let me hear from others though.
And I think, I think another reason. To abstain is, for instance, if it were an ongoing thing and and I had missed. A big chunk of the discussion, or maybe I had missed a public hearing where I, where I wasn't there to hear what people said. Or I wasn't part, here for an important part of the discussion, so I lacked the information. Uh, based on my not being there.
I I disagree though, it's up to you to get that in.
Right, right, no, I mean, I agree with that.
You need to bring yourself up.
Yeah, no.
You have a more narrow, you're like, conflict of interest.
Right, okay, right, and if I had done that and I didn't, if I tried to do that and I still didn't. You know, but that would be, that would be a very rare exception.
Okay. Cynthia, what else?
Yeah, other than those two, I I can't think of any other reason why abstaining. I guess, you know, one of the things in reading this both times, to me, it came across that. It's my res- I was elected by. The people who live in Redmond. To vote, and so it's my response, not only my legal responsibility, I guess, or maybe it's not, I don't know, but it is my responsibility. To um. Vote, the way I, after I've heard all the information, to make a decision.
I struggle with this vote, to be very honest with you, and and I did do some reading on abstentions. And one opinion was, you abstaining was conflict of interest. Um, in in that, but there was also one. It's neither a yes or a no vote, and for me. It is, was neither a yes or a no vote, because I heard from many members of our community. That they're firmly. Invested in community libraries. I also heard um, another group that they're very much in favor of the central library, so for me. It was, it was neither a yes or no vote for both sides of that, I really struggle when. Um, you know, I think the Stevens Ranch property is, is I, is better. Um, for the community as far as, you know, being in a, already an area planned and infrastructure there is. You know, is is going to be um. You know, part of our building. But at the same time, I heard people is, I I want, I value our small community libraries, I want more investment. There, and so for me, I struggled, it is. You know, we're, how do you, how do you then make decisions when you're hearing? From both, from both parties and from both sides and both sides are very, have very strong feelings.
Let's talk about that, because I, that, that was what motivated you, yeah, so let's get about that.
In my opinion, your district or. Whatever your um city voted to elect you. And you are the board member that has the most information that you could possibly get. So it's up to the board member. As I was elected, they trusted me to look at all that information and make a decision if I. Have to go back to my constituency to figure that out. We might as well go back to Sisters and have a vote on this every time. But they didn't elect me. To come back to them and say, I don't know what to do, because I'm hearing mixed signals. They elected me to make a decision. On the information that I had received, so. That's my thought.
Okay, I I agree, and I think one more step is that if, if um. The constituents questioned me on my vote, I should, I should have enough information as to why I made the vote I did. And be able to explain that to them, whether they agreed with me or not, that's one thing. But it would be my responsibility to most definitely explain to them why I voted the way I did. In fact, I I did kind of have that, I had a group of people in Redmond who were very upset about. Tearing down low building and a, a group of them approached me and talked to me about it and wanted me to discuss them. I I think after I, after we had, it was just a group of small little people, and after we talked about it. Uh, and I explained my reasoning and how I'd gone, how we went before the um historical society and things. And the majority of them, one person just could not agree, but the other said, okay, I understand why you voted the way you did. They are not, they're not happy with the fact that the school's gonna be destroyed, but they understand that. That the architects are doing everything they can to maintain an aspect of it.
Cause they don't agree with you, the next time, they cannot let you.
Exactly, that's the other thing, they can vote again, they don't have to reelect me, so.
Yeah, and I think the, another important thing is, and I. Because we're talking about representing constituencies, and I think we do, obviously. To make sure that we have the whole county represented, but we are voting for the good of the district as a whole. And, you know, and I, I. I know that we. Have, in the last couple of years, we've encountered more controversy than we've ever encountered, because these are big decisions. That we're making for the future of library services in our county. And I think that aspect of. It is our job to get all the information possible, to make really good decisions and. People out in the community, what I see a lot is people out in the community may have opinions. Or that, you know, they may have views on how they think things should go, but they don't have the full range of information. It'd be like, for instance, um. Beat on the city council. And and say the entire community came to you and we say, this is how we think you ought to. Handle houseless camps. Um, and and what they wanted was illegal, for instance, because you had done all this research. And you knew that the solution that they were in favor of was not legal. Well, you, you couldn't. Vote for that, even though community opinion was one thing, but that's our job is to get the information. And to make the best choices possible. Based on the information we have, and then, as you said, be able to tell people why you voted the way you voted. And if, and if people. Don't agree with that, um, then they can, they can exercise that at the ballot box, but but it's our job to do our job. And we're here to make those tough decisions, it's just like the, the closeness of all the elections that we've seen yesterday. Obviously, people on both sides had really big opinions about who they thought would be the better candidate. And so it'd be like not casting a vote because. There were two camps in opposition. I mean, there's always gonna be controversy and it's our job to sort through all of that. And to make our decisions based on what's best for libraries in our county as a whole.
The hard work of governing.
Yeah, essentially, that's our job, that's why we were.
Yeah.
Elected, and I think that's what this opinion is.
I mean, Anne brings up, it's hard.
Yeah, it is hard to make, right.
One is, if you have them. Literally, if you have a conflict of interest. You or your family or anyone you know has a financial, any kind of gain. You refuse yourself.
Yes.
You don't abstain for it, you don't even get the. You refuse yourself, you're out. Alright, you can do this.
Everybody's in agreement on that, that's.
That's the refuse, well, that's legal.
Yeah.
But the person refusing themselves makes the decision. They wanna be refused. So they got total conflict of interest and I'm gonna refuse myself.
Oh, really?
You can, you can sue afterwards, but you cannot stop them from not refusing.
If I knew that you own the property right next to Stevens Ranch, and I said, Ray, you need to recuse yourself.
And I can say, no, buddy, I'm not refused myself. That's the end of it.
That doesn't.
Well, you'd be a violation of moral ethics.
Or, yeah, you'd be a violation of your policy.
But you just happen to bring it up because I could still vote. Alright, so that's a weird part of the.
I mean, you're going by ORS, you know, a conflict of interest, right, so would be, yeah, that's pretty strange.
So that's not an abstention.
Yeah.
You should refuse, or bring it up. The other is, not all of them. Or when it's time to come to a vote. It's a, it's pretty much, you wanna have a black and white decision, it's yes or no. There is nothing between. My feeling is what the board is here to do when you have a lot of conflict. Within the community, the staff, even on board. It's our role to come to a solution. That not everybody gets what they want. But it works the best for the library and it works the best. For the community. The thing that brings us to mind is, the only other time I've ever found. Where there's, experienced this much. The only other time we've had this much public participation and conflict. And issue before the library was when we had the internet. I mean, that was. The first one, people coming to the board meetings, we'd sit there going. Holy moly. The room is full of people on both sides. Set, you know, block. Internet access, it's parents' rights, we wanna do, you can't have, give the children access there. The other thing is freedom of information that applies to kids. And you come back and say, okay, what's the legal age under American law? For parents to control, and turn that into sixteen, not eighteen. What we did was, section fifty thousand, the both sides, we have to come out with a policy that that works. So we said, parents have the right. To say whether their child has access to an internet. But you gotta be there with it.
Do you work out a.
For that kid, can I come down to the children's library and use their computer? So, and after this decision, I've. Bandits think people were coming up to me and saying, on the extreme right, saying, I'm glad you're our guy on the board. We got what we want. People came from the left saying, I'm glad you're our guy. Well, that's what we need to do before you get to the vote. So, time for vote is the wrong.
So we, we had this discussion before, okay, when I was with Sisters, talked about trying to reach consensus and. You know, you are a voting board, you do make decisions, sometimes it's possible to do those things. Sometimes it's not possible to do those things. Um, it's, you know, no, it's simple, it's, it's a decision. So Cynthia, you're gonna say something. Not always. I'm just, well, no, I don't think so, it's okay. Alright, so it's not always possible, yes, in the, in the world, it would be great if you could. Come to conclusions like that, but sometimes. You are making decisions as important, voting on things, and. The, the question before you is. The appropriateness of abstaining.
Yeah, but I'm saying, if you get to the point where somebody is gonna abstain or, and you know. Then you haven't really raised the point. It may be the wrong question, maybe we need to discuss something before that.
Well, then it's up to the individual board members to say, before we can vote, I want to discuss. X, we, you don't just wait till it comes to the vote and.
Yeah.
And and say, I'm not ready, it's like, it's up to us, if we have questions that aren't answered, if we have issues that we want discussed. We bring that up early in the process and say, hey, what about this? You know, I think we really need to take a look. And I think that's what hasn't been happening.
Let's just give an example of these, Ben, we just talked about, and we talked about, what do you need to know to make a decision?
Right.
At some point, you may, and I think this has happened, you have answered. A lot of those questions and. Some people are, may not be satisfied with the answers, which doesn't mean that the questions have a.
The question today was. Yes or no, do we sell these, pause these? And we're gonna have a discussion on it.
Yeah.
But then at the end of the discussion, we're gonna say, yes, we close it, no, we don't close it.
I think all the way.
A lot of us would feel like, no, maybe we should abstain.
Well, I think.
Cause we don't have a good solid feeling, so we get answers to that.
You know, you, you made an interesting, you said, you know, voting is black and white, yes or no, and you're right. And, but the thing is that it's not black and white, there's all this gray stuff in between. And as a board member, it's my responsibility to go through all that gray stuff. To make a determination to vote a yes or a no, that, after I've looked at all the gray stuff, I've looked at all the information. Then it's my, cause something has, a decision has to be made so that we move forward. And so it's my responsibility to go through all of that, to understand it, to ask questions, so that. I can responsibly place a vote and I can responsibly explain why I voted the way I did.
But it's, I'm saying, it's looking at the gray stuff. Within there. We should come to, we should be synthesizing what we know, creating what really works.
Right.
For the best.
And Ray, we.
And that's not necessarily just, yeah, yes or no.
But like, sometimes, I, I, some of the things that you're saying, I feel are objective, I mean. You know, we all have our own lens, how we look through things, and the way you perceive things is gonna be different than the way I. Doesn't mean that my vote's right, wrong, or your vote's right or wrong, it's just that. That's a determination that we've made based on the information and how we viewed it.
And it's perfectly reasonable, someone to vote no. And say, I'm voting no, because I feel like we haven't done enough to reach consensus on this question. That's a no, that's very different than, because you're not just going, no, you're going, you're explaining.
Why, why, right, and I think that's really important, and that's what we talked about earlier, is that we need to explain. Why to understand.
Yeah.
And I actually feel like this board has done a good. Job of when questions have been raised of dealing with. Questions have been raised of dealing with those, you know, like discussing those questions and exploring those issues. And then, what we have not done a good job with is when a decision has been reached, moving forward. You know, like we, so we explore the issue, and we do have a consensus, and we may not agree with. I shouldn't say consensus, we do have a majority decision. And then we move forward based on that, and that is different than not talking about it at all. Because I think we have talked about those issues, and I think it's up to us individually to raise those issues. But once we've decided, we have to accept that decision as a group decision and say, okay, we've decided to move forward in this area. Now, what is the next set of decisions?
And let's just admit, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say, if if as the board, if somebody says, okay, I'm voting no, and they, they say. We have not, I still have questions, I want them to go the next step, and I want them to say what those questions are. I want them to explain what it is we still need, because it seems to me there are times that we've had. Um questions that have come up, and it, it appears to me it's more not necessarily that we don't have. The information, it's that we just don't agree on the information or how to view it, and I think that. We need to honor that, saying, I have, I still have questions, these are my questions, and if the rest of us say. We've answered those questions and we can prove it, here's the information. I think that's important, cause I agree with Anne, we can, a lot of these things we can talk about forever, but never move forward, and that's not gonna help anybody.
Well, and that's a question I'm gonna ask all of you, is just imagine what would happen if you all abstained all the time. I mean, how would you operate this organization, how would you, you know, do that? And, you know, and you're not a consensus-based organization, that's not how you operate. And I, you use consensus all the time, I love it, and I go, we've seen me do this five, is I'm fully in support, four is I'm on board. Three is, um stand by it, two is I still have a question, and one is I'm against it. If you're a one, I wanna know what you need to come at least to three, you can, or I can just sabotage it or something. So that's how consensus works, you can try for that, but ultimately. You have, you know, you have to decide things, you know, you have to vote, and it's okay to vote no, when you feel like.
Yeah, and I, and I totally respect that, I mean, I don't expect. You know, it'd be great if we all agreed on a path forward, but you know, realistically, I think we've shown that that isn't always gonna occur. And so I can respect the fact that you wanna go a different direction. But what's important to me is that. We can't stay mired in that disagreement, because as Margo said. No, no decision is a decision, I mean, and and I feel like I have. I have a responsibility to the public to deliver on what we said we were gonna do. I mean, so I feel like, I I have feel like I have a responsibility to the people of this county. That if they voted for something, that we deliver that, in whatever shape that looks like, that we deliver it. Um and so.
You may have five zero votes, you have three, two, four, one, I mean, those are all.
Right.
It's, it's not the goal that every vote should be five, exactly, it is the goal that you may couldn't.
Yeah, to the best of our ability, based on the information we have, and if we don't have the information. That we get it in a timely manner, we don't, you know, like early in the process rather than late. Like, like we just did on East Bend, I mean, I thought that was a great discussion, but what do we need to know?
Yeah, I would just say, if. With respect to the members, if someone votes no. It's disrespectful to ask them why.
Right.
A no vote is a no vote. They don't have to justify it to the rest of us, and the question is, why, why did you vote no? The discussion that they made, they voted no, that's their decision. To ask them why they voted no says, no, you couldn't vote no, that's disrespectful to them.
No, to me, it's like, I wanna know, I wanna, I honestly wanna know why, whether it's like you oppose this. Issue philosophically, or because you didn't have enough information, I mean, that's a big difference.
That's asking the member to justify the no. We don't justify the yes.
I think you have to justify it to your constituents, like.
So you're gonna withhold information from your fellow board members that might affect a future decision?
I don't know, that's what the discussion, yeah.
Heard the deliberations, and you said, you heard all of the.
Yeah.
Points of view.
Yeah, well.
Person said, no.
That's what I'm hearing.
Know their point of view, but now you go to the question again. Why they have that point of view, that's, that is my mind, that's disrespectful.
Well, so to, so to have it be less disrespectful, or not disrespectful, um would it, would it be best if? If, so if somebody votes no, then it becomes responsibility for each of us to explain why we voted the way we voted, or you still feel less.
We should just let the vote.
Let the vote, and the vote is the vote.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, we, we talked about that earlier and agreed that we would provide information. So I won't ask that question.
That was in context of coming out of an executive session.
Yeah.
We've had discussion that the public hasn't, isn't privy to, and then we come back and we vote three to two. Um that's where there's an expectation that we'd be talking about why we're voting that way, because the public has no idea. And.
I thought it was earlier than that even, I mean, that wasn't, that wasn't, that was one.
So this really isn't a legal question exactly, even though you did get a legal opinion. But it's really um more than ethical. Group discussion of, you know, understanding why, you know, kind of where you were coming from, but in the end, there are some other options that are. You know, available and probably preferable, but also being respectful of people.
Okay, so, so in the future, I won't ask, is that everybody's consensus?
I don't think any of it's your ass.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can totally do that.
And you'll have the discussion and, yeah.
Okay.
Uh uh the part that concerns me is we have an issue, the gray area, we want to discuss it. So we start discussing that gray area, yeah, um and we discussed it. We disagree, I disagree with your opinion and your opinion on that gray area. And then we move to the next gray area or the next question. If you vote no because your questions haven't been answered, I can see that you disagree and you vote no, that's fine. If you vote no because, but my questions haven't been answered, that says to me. My questions haven't been answered in the way I want to be then. I wanted my questions to be answered yes, and you said whatever, uh that's not. That's not correct way in my estimation of thinking. We did discuss that, we discussed all those gray areas. I didn't get what I wanted, I really wanted A and everybody else wanna B in this, and then we went forward. The reasoning is that I disagreed with it, not that I didn't have enough information to go forward. Does that make sense?
Yeah, exactly, what I mean by gray area is. There's a difference of opinion. And the gray area is not the yes or no, cause then you already reached a decision.
Yeah.
So when there's a, a difference of opinion, I think it's our role when discussing these gray to deliberate. To synthesize, to try and come up with something that is not gray anymore.
That's.
That's the whole idea of deliberation, rather than just debate.
Right.
When we go into this and say, yeah, there's a conflict, we don't have the same philosophy, or we don't think. Let's begin, you know, central library versus community library, big difference. What is there that we can synthesize so that we can have, not a consensus, but an understanding. Of what can we do as a board to have what the community needs? Does it mean we made the, I mean, the options? I'm always looking for options, when we only have one option, there's no option at all. Yes or no, central library, there's no option there. Do we discuss, yeah, the central library could be a little bit smaller, plus a little bit less, we take that money to build another community library? Like saying, when we're talking about East Bend, instead of building East Bend, we lease it somewhere else, like, yeah, well. If we decide we're gonna make the central library smaller, save some money out of that, if the attorney says, yeah, we can take those funds and then go lease. Let's get that, let's discuss these things, but in the long range, right, it's not a yes or no, central library versus.
So I. Say that, having been around this discussion for a long time. My sense is that you have deliberated on these things, and that there is more deliberation happen. And I mean, we're here, we're not here to re, rediscover the central library in this discussion, it's really about the abstention. And so if you vote no because you feel like not enough deliberation was done. That's your option or whatever.
For whatever reason.
Right, for whatever reason, but I think the preference, I think, is to vote. And at some point. Do, do we need to readdress, relook at our policy about voting? I don't think, I mean, your policy is, um you know, says you will use um Robert's rules. And and then you're very clear about what conflict of interest is, and, you know, um. So I think your policies really say it, I think, it's. Having, it came up because it was an option for some, and and it was raised because it probably is. Not as, you know, as effective as it could be, so I think it, it, this group have that discussion. And think about what could make it more respectful and agree, whatnot, so, okay, anything else, well, we. So we did a lot today, we prioritized the results. And kind of clarified some direction, the staff. Discussed about how to reach, how to move forward on East Bend, with really good discussion, and actually kind of like. Kind of fits this last discussion we had, because like, we're not ready to make a decision, there's a lot of options here, we wanna know more. Exactly, and then you did reach consensus on rural land, land, and um. Now you have impactful agenda for your board meeting, right?
Yeah, so, this was so much fun, let's do it again this afternoon.
Yeah, really.
Anything else, uh I did just have one thing, as, as I was reading through um this afternoon's um. Board meeting information, it was sent, is there any way at some point in time that the board could go through some kind of D E. The diversity training like the staff is?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Hopefully for us to be, have a, be in link with the, the staff as far as the diversity.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'd like, I'd like, I'd like to see something like that.
Great, we'll look for opportunities.
Well, good work, everybody, really, the governance. Alright, well, the reason, we're in this on tap, well, it's kinda easy, I was surprised that, that was like.
Are you, uh, when you gavel it, I'll stop.
Look, sorry.
Okay.
We are adjourned.
Alright.
Lunch.
Lunch.
Sorry.
Alright.